We now call the meeting to order. If we could please pay attention to Councilmember Heller for the invocation and afterwards rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I want to introduce Reverend Carl Frazier. He's the pastor at New Hope and Love Community Church at 29th and Evening Side. I met Pastor Frazier one year at the Fiesta Parade because we both had cool cars. We have become good friends, and I totally appreciate the work that he and his wife Lynessa do with the church in the Topeka community and beyond. New Hope and Love Community Church was founded around 1959 as Southwest Baptist Church. You may be more familiar with that name. Reverend Frazier became pastor in 2012, and since then they've been doing ministries different than the traditional Baptist tradition, though they are still a Baptist affiliate. They want to ensure everyone who walks through their doors feels welcome and loved. New Hope is involved in the Carribean Prison Ministry, in the Jump Coalition, in communities creating opportunity, in the police departments, Topeka Police Department's Task Force on Gun Violence, the current Committee on Human Trafficking, and many more initiatives. Most of their ministries are about justice. We're supposed to stand now. Reverend Frazier?
Let us pray. Lord, we just thank you for this day, Lord. In your word in John 13:34, you said these words, "A new commandment I give to you, that you love one another as I love you, that you also love one another." And I just ask, Lord, that we in this room spread love all across this city and all across this nation, Lord. People need to know that they are loved, Lord, need to know that they are needed, need to know that, Lord, that we care about them, Lord. Well, I just ask that you bless each person here under my voice, bless the leadership here, and bless the mayor. And, Lord, we just thank you for their leadership. We thank you, Lord, for what's the good things that's going around in Topeka right now, Lord. The police department interacting with the youth and all the things that's going on, Lord, the positive things, Lord. We just thank you for this, Lord. And, Lord, continue to bless this city of Topeka. Let it be a city of love. And these and others blessed the rest, may your kingdom, praise your name forever. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now have a proclamation. If we could invite our friends from Ronald McDonald House to come over. Some exciting, some excitement back here. Yeah. We're a lively group, my friends. So the proclamation states, "Whereas the Ronald McDonald House Charities of Northeast Kansas is a nonprofit organization that seeks to help families close by providing a comfortable and conveniently located home for parents and loved ones who have children receiving medical care at area hospitals. And whereas Topeka's Ronald McDonald House offers guests, families as a comfortable place to sleep, home-cooked meals, and fully-equipped double kitchen, a gathering area for families to relax, laundry facilities and Wi-Fi access, and ongoing support from staff, volunteers, and others in other families. And whereas more than 15,000 families have stayed at Topeka's Ronald McDonald House, I, Michelle De La Isla, Mayor of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim June 15, 2018, as Ronald McDonald House Day." If you guys could say a few words?
Sure. We're celebrating the 30th birthday of the Ronald McDonald House this Friday, June 15th, and everyone's invited to visit our house from 2:00 to 5:00 on Friday. We're having an open house with tours. We're located at 825 Southwest Buchanan Street, and we're very excited.
Just want to say thank you for the community support that we've been given, and we appreciate your continued support.
This is my second tour on the board, so I'm probably the most tenured, I'm not going to say oldest, person here on this line here. But honestly, the Ronald McDonald House is a very valued institution in the community, provides a much-needed service, and so honestly, we're just really happy about this honor. Thanks.
On behalf of the City of Topeka, we want to say thank you for the support that you give our families in such a vulnerable time and for the significant care. I know that our TPD officers are very involved in pulling the plane, and even though it's very hard for us, one of our officers, Trey McCluskey, who passed away recently, was going to be part of the team, and our boys and ladies are doing this to honor him. So it's an important charity for our staff and for our community, so we thank you for all you do.
I also, Mayor, I also want to give them a little plug for the August 25 Denim and Diamonds Gala that I'm looking forward to, so get your tickets.
We now proceed to presentations. The clerk will read.
Presentation from Sustainability Advisory Board Annual Report.
City manager?
Thank you. We're here to hear tonight the presentation regarding Sustainability Annual Report. I've been involved in sustainability issues back when I was in Mason City, so I was excited to see that there was a board that was here, prepared, and is working on these things. So I'm anxious to have you hear the information that they've provided to me, and so welcome aboard.
Good evening. My name is Garrett Carpenter, and I'm a member of the Sustainability Advisory Board for the City of Topeka. I want to thank the governing body, the council, and manager and his staff for giving us an opportunity to present the 2018 Sustainability Advisory Report to the council. So all of you have a copy of the 2018 report. It's about four pages. You'll find some common things that were presented last year, but also some new things. One of the things that we wanted to do was to not just rehash what you've experienced before, but to try something a little different. And so what we've created is essentially a dashboard, and it's modeled a little bit out of like Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, except in this case, it's actually the City of Topeka's needs. You start with, at the top, the very basic things, water, food, and move all the way down to things that are a bit more esoteric, that enter into the quality of life, and what makes a place like Topeka a place where people want to live and work. So what we developed is, under these topics, basically a traffic light type of approach with green for things that are going well, making progress, next steps ready to be taken, yellow things that perhaps need a little more attention, and red, things that don't seem to be getting any focus. So with that, we'll get started and head down through. Focusing first on the things that are green that we should really be proud of. One of them is that we're now being compliant with the EPA standards for safe drinking water. That's huge, and I would tell you that it certainly is great that the city has achieved that level of cleanliness for the drinking water. I would tell you, though, that the EPA guidelines associated with that are kind of a basic meets minimum requirements. And so what we're asking the city council to do is to take a look at new and more efficient methods of water treatment and filtration that will help with things that could later become long-term health issues, like we're talking about complex compounds that are found in pharmaceuticals, runoff from farming operations and the chemicals that are used there, things even as simple as plastic microbeads, which most people aren't even aware of, but are actually in many cleaning agents that are used in household and industrial use, and they're such fine, small pieces of plastic that they can't even be filtered by the technology that's currently in use. So as you move forward and consider down the road what's going to happen with delivering safe drinking water to the city, we hope that you'll take a look at more aggressive and improved methods of filtration and treatment that will help safeguard the citizens from these kinds of potential health hazards down the road. The wastewater compliance is truly, causes everybody a sigh of relief because we were able to get back into compliance without having to do a lot of remediation, digging up sewers, et cetera. And so we think that's a great thing. I'm sure that the folks downstream from us appreciate it quite a bit as well. And so as we go down through, I want to touch also on community gardens, which you all have done a great job in supporting, and we certainly think that it's of value to the community to have those kinds of neighborhood organizations get together, put in gardens, and help actually provide access to fruits and vegetables that they may have difficulty getting access to that's particularly important for low-income families. So we appreciate your support for that. As far as energy use, as you know, back in 2010, the city council set up a goal for the city to reduce its energy usage by 10% by 2020. And the prior administration didn't have a lot of focus on that, and we're very pleased that the new city manager has taken steps to figure out kind of the baseline where we are now, so that then we can determine what the gap is between where we are and the 2020 goals that you all had set out for us. The next one is single-stream recycling, which although it's not something that the city owns or operates, this is something that is a real differentiator in our minds because there's a lot of communities who would love to have single stream and just don't. And so the fact that we've got it is a big feather in our cap, and I think it's one of the many things that we have to be proud of here in the city. Complete Streets and also through in the Bike Pathways program are excellent. I've been tangentially involved in some of the workings of that, and I can tell you that there's a lot of dedicated folks who are putting these plans together, and I think we're already seeing a lot of beneficial results from those efforts. The Street Maintenance Plan that Jason Peake and his team have put together is really important because not only did it take a comprehensive look at all of the condition of the streets that we currently have, but is using some science and technology to figure out what's the most effective way to, over time, bring the condition of those streets up to a much better level and do it in the most economical way possible. We feel like that's a great plus as well, and so does anybody who's driven the streets in our city lately. The Forestry Plan is another essential thing that we think is going to be a great win for the City of Topeka, and the current piece that's being worked on is a complete comprehensive inventory of the population, the tree population of our urban forest. You have to know what's there in order to develop a plan. And as we've mentioned to you before, we're taking out something on the order of 600 to 800 trees a year and replacing very few of them. And so having a forestry plan that focuses not just on where to plant, but what to plant, so that we end up with a diverse urban forest that can withstand things like Dutch elm disease in the old days, emerald ashbore beetle, those kinds of things, having that diversity will really help us maintain and have a robust urban environment. And that's very important because not only are they aesthetically pleasing, they provide living space for plants and animals, and they're also help keep the city cooler, help prolong street life, and there's a lot of good reasons why we should pay attention to having a strong urban forest. So those are the positive things that I think, from our perspective, the city has a lot to be proud of. And we'll turn now to some things that could use some additional focus. One of them, even as good as community gardens are, they help from maybe May through September, October, and then we think of a place like 10th and Lane that used to have a Dylan's and doesn't now. There are other places like that that are underserved by grocery stores. We're asking the city council to perhaps think outside the box and try and figure out if there are ways that we can develop partnerships, either with private or public entities, that can help provide food to these underserved areas. So we think that's something that's really worth considering. In the past, the City of Topeka has had, in fact, an award-winning, Energy Star award-winning affordable housing program. And in the prior administration, there wasn't a lot of focus placed on that, but I think tonight you're going to hear another presentation, perhaps, that deals with the affordable housing issue, and hoping that you will all consider having a robust affordable housing program is a critical element for the City of Topeka. As it relates to development of that baseline, to know where we are now in terms of our energy usage, we need that in order to have an energy plan that the city can figure out what that gap is between where we are currently and the 2020 goals that you all set out. And so not only developing that plan, but also making sure that when it comes to new city buildings that are being planned or renovations that are being planned, that energy efficiency be brought in on the front end of the process, so that we don't end up having the plan complete and the budget set, and then all of a sudden we figure it out that really wasn't, the focus up front should have been on making this as energy-efficient as possible, because most of the buildings that the city owns have been around for a long time. And so operating costs, what it takes to keep that going after it's built should be as much of a concern as the upfront cost. So we're hoping that the city council can make sure that that focus is placed at the front end of that process. Waste-to-waterway is kind of an interesting topic because not many people think of the City of Topeka as a coastal city, but it is. And the reason it is, is because, in fact, the whole state of Kansas is one huge watershed. Everything that's not permanently affixed to the ground ends up dispersed by the rain and into waterways of some type, whether it's creeks, lakes, rivers. And so it's really important to understand that what happens in Kansas doesn't just stay in Kansas, because if it gets into the Shanga, gets into Soldier Creek, ends up in the Kansas River, goes to the Missouri, goes to the Mississippi, and then enters the Gulf, Louisiana State University estimates that 90% of the debris that leaves the Mississippi and goes into the Gulf is plastic. It's an amazing amount of debris that's entering our world's oceans, like the Gulf of Mexico. In fact, every major ocean now has what's called a trash vortex. It's a debris field that's full of floating debris, and in the case of the Pacific Ocean, it's now twice the size of Texas. If you've driven across Texas, you know that that's enormous. They're estimating there's 1.7 trillion pieces of trash in the Pacific Ocean, and the bulk of that is plastic. So what happens in Kansas doesn't stay in Kansas. You just have to walk down the Shanga Creek, and you can tell that plastic that's been inadvertently put into the storm sewer or left as trash ends up in our waterways. We're asking the city council to take what I believe is probably going to be a big ask, that you consider banning plastic grocery bags and plastic straws. Other communities, particularly communities on the coast, are already considering this. So we're going to ask that you give that some consideration as well. In green space, we would like for the city council to ensure that projects that the city takes on have included in them the inclusion of native plants. They're so important to the Kansas ecosystem, and oftentimes when we've talked to folks like city engineers, et cetera, about inclusion of native plants into projects, it's, again, comes too late in the process, and the budget's set, and there's nothing left. Our take on it is, if we take and consider that up front, we can make it part of the budget and have it included, and be better off for having those pieces of the ecosystem involved with our city projects. Public education, if you can see a stream of thinking along here, is really twofold. One of them is, we as Topequans have a lot to be thankful for and appreciate. The things that you see in green are terrific. A lot of Topequans don't know about this. There are ambassadors to the rest of the world. Everybody that they touch, they have an opportunity to tell you how great Topeka is. They've got to have ammunition to tell those folks that story. We would like to work with the city public relations department and media department to come up with a comprehensive way to get information like this out, and we'd be delighted to work with Molly to try and put that together. The other thing is, I would say probably every Topecan would like to help in some way, whether it's with recycling, whatever the case might be, but some of them just don't know the difference between styrofoam and something that's recyclable. And having education to help them do better in the end helps us all be better stewards of our space. So we would like to include not just the attributes, the things that we have that are great and we should be proud of, but also provide some education on how to tell what's recyclable, what's not. Where should I dispose of unused medications? And a variety of things that would all help us be better stewards of our environment. The last thing that we've got, and I know this is always a touchy subject, because my sense has been that there's a fairly strong builder lobby that isn't necessarily interested in the city adopting the International Energy Conservation Code. And I know the argument is, well, it's going to raise the cost for building a home. And I get that, but I don't think that's a strong argument. And the reason is because if the city adopts it, then every builder is going to have to adhere to whatever that level of code is that the city adopts, which means that every builder has the same advantage or disadvantage, if you would care to look at it that way, of having to comply. And so the fact that builder A is concerned that his residential projects are going to cost more money isn't at a competitive disadvantage against builder B, who has to adhere to the same goal. And I think if I were a builder, that I would think that having a highly-energy-efficient home would actually be more of a selling point, because it means that whoever owns that home isn't going to have to spend as much in terms of utilities, and neither is the next person who buys that home. So it should have a lot of appeal to the homeowner. So I think it's worth considering, and I know it's not something that's happened in the past, but certainly would appreciate your willingness to do that. In closing, I wanted to say a couple of things. One of them is, we have perennially asked you for at least a half-time person to be a sustainability coordinator. And I got the question this evening, well, is that going to save us money? I think it is, but that doesn't help much, I don't think, in the justification of that. And so what I would tell you is that I would be willing to put together a business case that would quantify the benefits associated with having a sustainability coordinator, which we think is important, because you see all the things in yellow and red, and getting the word out about those, putting focus on those, and then being a proponent of all of the things in green is something that somebody in that position could readily help with. So there are benefits, soft costs, I would say, but definitely benefits. But I would be willing to help put together a business case to see what we can justify, because even a part-time person would be a big help. And then finally, I would say that I bet almost every person that lives in Topeka would like Topeka to be a better place to live and work. There's a lot of us, particularly on the Sustainability Advisory Board, who are willing to work to make that happen. What we need is some leadership. You've already shown that you have that capability, because there's a lot of green going on already. We just need some more, and we're hoping that you all can provide that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate the things that you just brought to our attention, and I'm excited to see all the things that we do have in green. I do know that, just like everybody in the nation, we're taking a look at what we're doing and how we could be more efficient, and how we can reduce emissions and do better for our community. I think that, I think it was like a week ago, I received an email asking me if I would support banning plastic bags and plastic straws, and I said, absolutely, absolutely. I said, the thing is that I'm not the one that unilaterally makes the decision, but if the council would be agreeable to this, I think that it would be a great thing for our community to do, because it is true. And most of the retail operations that utilize this type of bags already have, because there's pressures on the coast for them to change what they're using, they already have that stuff, so we're not the ones breaking through with the technology. The council, I know that councilwoman Claire has a question.
Actually, you answered an important question for me. In National Geographic this month, they have a wonderful article on plastic, and that there's nine million tons of it each year that end up in the ocean. So when I went for my straw this morning, I went, now how am I contributing to anything? I don't put this straw in the ocean, because I don't live by the ocean, but, and I don't litter, but as you said, I thought, you know, how can anybody in Kansas affect that? And you answered that question, because it goes whoop, right down there.
What happens in Kansas doesn't stay in Kansas.
No, so I am with you on eliminating those.
Vivian Meier?
So a quick comment and then a couple of questions. I wonder what the folks in Las Vegas think about that. What happens in Vegas stays in Vegas. That's a joke, people, come on. So a couple of questions. First of all, I really like this new format. It's very informative. It's an excellent way of doing a quick, high-level overview to see where we stand. And in fact, it looks like we stand pretty well, just as it sits, which is, you know, an excellent testament to the work we've already done. My concern on part of this is a lot of these things, the city doesn't have direct control over, you know, so it's a whole lot of, you know, when we lost the Huntington-Dylan's, there was a substantial outreach by a number of levels of the government to try and work with the private sector to save that, and it was not successful. So, you know, my fear is, is we're setting somebody up for failure if we're, you know, intend to put somebody, and then their sole job is to try and attract grocery stores to come in and build things in these places without providing heavy, heavy subsidies to get them to do so. And, you know, that's a substantial And, you know, that's a substantial budget that we don't have. So, my fear is that with some of these, the subsidies required to make the private sector get to do what we want are simply unsustainable. My other comment is on the residential building codes, it's not competing in the city. We're competing with the county and we're already at a significant disadvantage. So, I would recommend lobbying the county for those building codes. That would truly level the playing field with building in the city and the county. And as you know, most of the development going on right now is not in the city of Topeka. And I've argued that that's a huge problem with our community. You know, we need to be out there hustling for those building permits within the city limits as it sits now and currently they're not. The numbers just don't support that. So, I'd be interested to see what you all's take is on that. And I would very much like to see the business case. I'm all for investing where it makes sense to save money, looking the areas where that particular person would be responsible for. I don't immediately see it, but I'm absolutely open to having my mind changed with, you know, good, solid information. So, I very much appreciate seeing that if you guys are going to put the effort into doing that.
Well, I appreciate your open-mindedness and we will work on putting that together.
The only other comment I have is, you know, I think right away we could do something with native plants. That's an easy directive to put to the folks that are writing RFPs. So, you know, easy things to change. Other than that, excellent work. Thank you for the report.
Thank you very much for your time.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I really support pretty much everything my colleagues have said. I think it's exciting to see that you all have weathered a time when some folks were not as interested in sustainability. Sustainability, to me, just makes sense, but sometimes the business case does need to be made for it. When we were talking about updating the international building codes that we use here, we did talk about that, Energy Conservation Code as well, and there was some, let's just say, mixed conversation about that. But if you could help us with the business case for why that works. I do know that, and I appreciate your out-of-the-box thoughts as well as those from the body in that I was talking with someone not long ago who's been involved in a campaign about getting rid of plastic bags and straws. And that person was telling me that, to her surprise, when they started to build their coalition, the folks from the grocery industry showed up and said they were fine with getting rid of them too. And people didn't expect that. So, sometimes when we think something sort of unusual, we didn't ask. And so, those kinds of stories hearten me as well. Just have one wrap-up question. We all got some emails from members of the group or supporters of sustainability and those emails made reference to existing 2020 goals in an energy efficiency and conservation plan. Is that the Vermont Energy Study from 2010 or is it something different?
It was based on that, yes.
Okay. I guess I would, I don't know if you've got a specific answer, but if, I remember the Vermont Energy Study and it was sort of split in half, it was right after I came on council and it was pretty comprehensive and it was split into two tracks and it included very measurable metrics for within the city and then a corresponding set for the community at large of things that we could do to improve sustainability. And it, actually measuring and tracking those metrics fizzled after a few years, but I wondered if that was the plan and whether you thought we should simply move on with more of a chart like what you shared with us today or whether we should be going back to that.
Well, and I won't speak.
I'll talk too, but go ahead.
That I think it's important to understand where we are now and then compare that with what the 2020 goal set out and see if it's realistic for us to achieve that in the 18 months that are, well, 18 months, depending on how you count, because you hate to let a goal go away if you can attain it. But having said that, even if we are able to attain that goal, we've got to step back and take a look further down the road and make sure that we're setting the next goal. So, either way, progress is really what we're looking for. And so, Mr. Manager has some thoughts on that topic as well.
City Mayor, you're?
I don't want to stifle conversation here. Yeah, I've made some notes and Derek and I met and talked about some of these things and obviously there's usually a conflict with my attending their meeting each time, but have been a couple of times. And as we look at these things, a couple of comments that I want to make on each of their, not on each of their items, but some of their items. You know, we're already in the process of studying how to make our water taste better. We're, that's being reviewed right now. We're looking at activated carbon and other opportunities that exist on processes that can be used to make our water taste and smell better. So, all of those things are being done and I think there will be some solutions in the near future and then we'll also continue to study whether that continues on with potentially doing the ozone process. With wastewater, I think we're doing a very good job of handling our wastewater end products and we're working on our methane gas capture project, which in the end will also help us with our sustainability, taking a product that we currently burn off and actually producing some funding from it. So, I think those are good things. I've talked to Planning Director Finder and we actually are going to have the Building and Fire Appeals Board is going to be looking at the IECC to determine whether it's something that we want to adopt completely, in part, or not at all. So, that is going to be reviewed as an option and see what makes sense for our community. Some of those rules and regulations are worth applying and can, in the long run, make houses affordable with the reduction in injury costs. As we look at affordable housing, that is coming next week, so we'll be discussing what we're doing there. I had, prior to departure of our last year's interns, they did do a review of some of the information related to how we're doing and accomplishing the energy goals that were established for us to complete by 2020. And we're doing okay. We're still waiting for some final data back from West Star on a few of our accounts to determine what our actual usages were and we'll be getting re-energized to finish off that analysis. But if you look at it, we have with regards to the new buildings, as we look at the renovation of City Hall, we're clearly looking at great opportunities for us to institute some changes relative to energy efficiency. I know that Dr. Peak has done some of the buildings already. Other buildings within the city's infrastructure are buildings we own, making them more energy-efficient, better lighting, that's more energy-efficient. So, we are making some changes there and making some progress. The wastewaterway, I can tell you that the last Earth Day, a number of utilities staff members went out and cleaned a number of our waterways and got rid of some of the materials that you have. And then there've been others that have been called into us that, relative to our waterways in this community that are, have trash in them and they've gone and worked either with the inmate crews or with the utility staff to clean them up. So, we are making some progress there. And so, I think as we look at some of these things, we're really actually starting to address them. I think that, sure, some of them probably are yellow because we're not fully developed with what we're doing, but I hope that we can show some progress in the future that they can come back and say in their opinion, they think we're green. So, I'm excited about that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
City Manager, and I don't, I'm going to address you because I don't know who to address, but I know before we've gotten a report on the efficiencies of the lights when you come in, I don't know what they call it, when you come in, they automatically go on and off. And I seen you here one Friday night and you're going through the hallway and you're turning off all these lights. And I say that in sincerity. I mean, they cost money when they're on. And I know we got a report at one time and I know it was a budget issue. Where do we add on that? Because that's probably been a couple of years.
Well, a lot of that has to do with the fact that we're in the middle of doing a renovation and so to add something now and then take it out right when we do the renovation is probably not a good investment. But many of those types of energy efficiency things are being planned for the renovation and it will make a difference.
So, when you talk about efficiencies, that's part of that plan, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deputy.
Deputy Mayor.
So, one quick follow-up question. Mr. City Manager, so I'm looking at our website here and indeed, there is nothing about our sustainability efforts on the webpage that I can easily find. And I think you're absolutely right, that public education is a big part of showing what the community is doing and doing well and where citizens can help. What does it, what does it take to pair everybody up and get that done? Is that something we can do pretty easily?
I think so.
Okay.
I believe so.
I think that's an excellent, you know, again, that's probably not a significant investment in capital to do so and I, we're doing fairly well according to the report, so I think that's an excellent way of starting the public education proponent. I do agree, needs work.
And if I could have one closing remark, many of us on the Sustainability Advisory Board prior to last year or even as late as last year, were really questioning the value that we brought in meeting to discuss these topics because we didn't feel like it was resonating with the administration. And the turnaround has been like night and day. And so thankful that we have a city manager who takes this seriously and has immersed himself in the city of Topeka to understand what the needs are and has already made more progress on these things than the prior administration during the whole time that they were in place. And so, thank you all for the perseverance that it took to go through that process, which I know was much longer than you wanted, to make sure that we got a good person in this position and you did a hell of a job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we proceed with the roll call, I will announce that Councilmember Cohen sent me a message letting me know that he is out of town and he will not be with us tonight. He sends his regrets. And now we proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Daley's left.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Padilla.
Here.
Jensen.
Happy to be back in my spot. I'm present.
Mays.
Here.
Cohen. And Lester.
Here.
We now proceed with appointments. If the clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Michael Wilson to the Board of Building and Fire Appeals for a term ending June 1, 2020.
We have an appointment in front of us. The mayor does not vote. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by the deputy mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Mays. If there's no comments, we proceed with the voting.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes. The motion passes. If we could please say thank you to Mr. Michael Wilson who is here. If you could please rise so that we can recognize him.
Well, listen, this is my 11th term, so I don't know what I've done to deserve that. But I'm looking to be clear.
Thank you, thank you for everything that you do for our community, Mike. We appreciate you. All right, we now proceed with the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
A is denial of a tort claim submitted by Josephina Marmalaya for $40,000 for damage related to a house fire in November 2007. B is denial of a tort claim submitted by attorney Vernon Jarboe on behalf of Chris Schultz and Schultz Development LLC for $116,000 for alleged damages related to water infiltration at 909 and 911 South Kansas Avenue. C are minutes of the regular meeting of June 5, 2018, and there are no applications.
I would like to recognize Councilmember Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a custom that if someone who has filed the claim is here and wants to speak to that claim, that we are willing to pull it off the consent agenda and allow that person to speak. So, if I need to make a motion to remove it, I so move.
We have a motion for removal of an item. Do we have a second?
I guess I should say item 5B, Mr. Schultz is here.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hiller. We have a second. If there's no other, yes, Councilwoman Clear.
So, if we remove it, he speaks and we put it back on?
If we remove it, Mr. Schultz speaks and then that item becomes a standard all item on the agenda. Therefore, we then proceed with the consent agenda afterwards for the vote of the rest of it.
Right.
But this would now become a single item.
And you're proposing we do it ahead of the consent agenda? Usually it goes...
Let's do it after.
I would probably move to 6B normally as an action item.
I guess, when did this happen and why did this happen? Did he just decide to speak all of a sudden or?
It's not uncommon for someone to choose to come.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So, there's a significant amount of information that was presented to us here that was not part of the initial claim and has not run the standard claim process. So, I'm not really comfortable voting yea or nay on this, having not had this run, all this information run the normal process. So, how would we remand it back with this additional information to run the standard claim process so that our internal folks could look at it the way they normally would? I mean, there's a, you know, a bunch of technical information in here that, you know, while I like to think I'm a fairly smart person, I'm not an engineer.
Deputy Mayor, staff reviewed the entire case file and was facing denial, but the claim that was submitted is very vague. I think they're just preserving their right perhaps to pursue the matter further. If you all want to defer until next week, I mean, we can do that, but I think that there's a timeframe we have to act with them.
And that's true, but I don't know that this information has been reviewed by anybody. It was just presented to me this evening.
I think staff has most of the information upon which Mr. Schultz will speak.
So, that was reviewed as part of the one-page claim that was submitted?
He did not submit all of that with his claim.
Right. And that's why I'm questioning is, should that, should this information have been submitted with the claim so it could be handled as one single claim?
Probably should have, but it wasn't.
This is a process, so I guess I'm not totally understanding. I want to make sure everything has been looked at by everybody that's supposed to and without that all having been submitted as the claim, I don't know that it was and I don't know that that's the full recommendation.
So, just so that the folks at home follow what's occurring, there is an item that has been discussed in executive session because it's a matter pertaining litigation. At this point in time, when you have litigation happening at the city of Topeka in general, the council is not to talk with the parties and their communication is supposed to occur from attorney to attorney to litigate the matter. What is occurring right now is that we have been handed a packet this evening that the attorneys are stating that has not been received by the city of Topeka prior with the initial claim. And the consideration that the council, that deputy mayor is making is that if this has not been received by our staff and we are in the middle of a litigation process, the due process would be to withhold so that our staff can take a look at the information.
Mayor, what I'm saying is I believe that most of this information that may be in this correspondence that you received, staff has taken a look at, whether it's an engineering report or having had conversations with Mr. Schultz. I'm not sure exactly what all is in the case file that our civil litigation team has, but it's got a lot of this type of information in it, but it may not have been submitted with actual claim that Mr. Jarboe submitted on behalf of Mr. Schultz.
Okay.
But the information, I think we clearly understand and know about.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz, I mean, Clear.
So, I feel like we're circumventing legal and I don't, I don't feel comfortable doing that. I don't think, I don't feel comfortable saying, nope, I'm going to take this away from legal and start, so I won't go along with this.
If I might.
Deputy Mayor.
So, while I'm happy to pull it off the consent agenda, it would be to remand it or however we would send it back so that everything in its entirety, including this packet, could be looked at through the normal process. Well, but they haven't looked at it as the single claim. I mean, all this information is out there, yes, but it's, I don't know what can be considered as part of the claim, if it's not submitted with the claim. You know, again, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know how that works, but this isn't the way this is normally handled and that makes me nervous because there's a team of experts that guide us through this process as laypeople and that hasn't happened in this case and I'm not comfortable with how this is going. Because I want to make sure he gets a fair shake, absolutely.
That's correct, Deputy Mayor, and the attorneys have been working with each other and the attorneys know the rules within which time periods they have to provide information in order to make those claim deadlines. So, you know, I think that's all occurred. I think whatever they submitted with their claim, they submitted with their claim. There's additional information here.
But they did, the claim was one page.
Right, but I'm saying that the legal department knew most of the underlying facts and circumstances, but it was incumbent upon them to... but it was incumbent upon them to submit that information with their claim at the time they made the claim.
Councilwoman Padilla.
You know, I understand, and I kind of agree that I think we're taking control of something that belongs in legal. And knowing all, that all those conversations and communications have gone back and forth, we don't have privy to all those communications, so we really don't know exactly what all is in there. So, for me, you made a recommendation here based on what you and your staff have been able to review. If it was deficient in its application, and they need to make another application, I guess, but for the, what was applied for, I would be inclined to take the recommendation and not put it off or remand or anything like that. I would not support removing it from the consent agenda.
Councilwoman Lester.
To save time, I would support basically what Mr. Padilla said. I believe we vetted this during the executive session last week, and I would not support moving this from the consent agenda as well.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I guess I'd like to ask the city attorney, in your professional opinion, should we hear testimony for Mr. Schultz tonight on this?
Councilmember Emerson, it's perfectly fine to, to hear what Mr. Schultz has to say. I have absolutely no reason to be upset or concerned about that at all. With respect to the claim, the claim was submitted as it was, and that's what we have to work with, and that's what we're basing our recommendation on. But please know that we're privy to a lot of the facts that probably are in this information that was presented here this evening.
Councilwoman Mays? And I appreciate you asking. That's where I was going to go after everybody had a chance to talk, to say, Mr. Schultz is here, present with his family, if, if it would be okay, since he has made the point of coming over here and we are discussing the item and it's under discussion, if we would be able to hear Mr. Schultz for the four minutes that we would allot any other citizen.
Madam Mayor, I, I wouldn't think that would be appropriate during the, if we pulled from the, if it's not pulled from the consent agenda, I would think that that would be appropriate during public comment for him to voice his opinion.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hiller.
Just for, for my colleagues, I have not seen the material that's in this report. What I do know is that our custom has been that if someone who has a claim comes to the meeting and indicates that they would like to say some remarks, I'm not aware that we have ever turned anyone down. And I am very uncomfortable with that precedent of us doing that. If we decide that we haven't heard any new information, or we want to remand it back to legal, we can do that. But the idea of a consent agenda is that we don't talk about it as much as we just did. You know, that if there's something to talk about, we pull it off and deal with it separately. And that was, based on that precedent, as well as the conversation was my only purpose for that. I, I represent that district, and generally, we, we do defer, so I thought, figured it would come to me anyway.
So Councilwoman, would, so that it would satisfy the desires of everybody, would you be amicable to making a friendly amendment to your motion to state that you would like to remand this item back to legal? And change the motion so that we could move it, and then if the individual wants to speak, they could do so?
If, if you want to do that, it still has to come off the consent, consent agenda for us to...
We have to pull it off.
To do something with it.
Just as a point of order, I believe Robert Truel says if there's a single objection to an item being on the consent agenda, it's pulled as an action item.
That's right. I, I think what you should do, Mayor, perhaps at this point in time, is there's a motion and a second to remove it from the consent agenda. I think go ahead and vote on that, and if the vote is successful, you remove it, it becomes an action item. You go ahead and vote on the other three items that are on the consent agenda, and then you come back to, to the claim, and Mr. Schultz can speak at that point in time, and then you can vote on the claim.
So at this point in time, we're making a vote. We have a motion and we have a second to remove the item from the consent agenda. It would now become item 6B to be discussed for the, for the action items. So if there's no further comment, we are to proceed with the vote.
We have six yes with Clear, Padilla, and Lesser voting no.
Six having voted yes, the item passes. It is now an item that has moved on to the action items. Now we move with the consent agenda. And we have, it's already been read, it's been edited, and if there's no further comment, we now proceed with the vote. Deputy Mayor.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes.
We have a second.
There's the second.
We have a motion and a second for the agenda.
Is that Councilmember Clear who seconded?
Yes, Councilmember Clear, pardon me. We now proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed with the action items. If the clerk would read.
A is approval of the 2019 Social Services grant allocation recommendations in the amount of $440,273.
City Manager.
Your Honor, I'll defer to the committee chairperson for this item.
Councilwoman Clear.
Okay, to remind you, and maybe let you know if you didn't have time to read through this, the minimum grant amount was 10,000, the maximum was 25. It's set that last year. Two agencies were grandfathered in on a vote last year, the Shawnee Medical Society and Positive Connections. And then there was a maximum, or maximum 15 per program available for an organization not established with the city within the last three years. So, a brand-new program that we didn't know about the organization. They had to have 95 percent, not, I'm sorry, at 89 percent on their score. Now, the score, in your summary report, we're adults, I'm not going to sit here and read this whole thing. But the review and scoring was done by four community members and one staff member. They were chosen because they knew about grants. They scored each grant, which gave the grants their final score. The Department of Neighborhood Relations offered up that it should be a score of 89 or higher, which is what we had done the previous year, and that was approved. So now we are asking, due to the number of agencies that got an 89 or above on their grant, that that would come out to 398, 344, and then recommend emergency aids 41929, and the total amount of funding is 44273. So I want to make sure that everyone knows, this is a lot of people had input to this. You know, this isn't just the committee, it's not just me, there's, it's not just staff. There's a lot of people that look at this. We got input from agencies, they, they liked this process, it worked. So we would ask that you would approve this amount. Oh, I want, I do want to remind you, and I'm going to butcher his name, Dr. Pizino?
Pizino.
Pizino. When he spoke on March 30th, he said, "Social services will improve our city's health because anything that you can have that narrows the gap between the haves and the have-nots is going to improve our community." And that's the social services. So this will also help the health of our community. So I move that we approve the 400, is it 44273? No.
Yeah.
Yes.
44273.
For the social services funding for 2019.
Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor. Well, I would like to say thank you, because I know for years, we've been working on this committee, and it has been a long-term process of trying to hone in what, what the formula is going to be. And I was very encouraged last year, the last year that we worked together on it, that the, actually, the nonprofits were finally content with the process. And it's, it's encouraging to see that you ladies work so well together to make sure that we have a solid document to present and that the nonprofit organizations are also supportive of this. So, additional comments before we proceed with the voting? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate your comments. Not everybody was, and you know, you're always going to have that, not everybody was happy with the process. And I think we said in August, is that right? We're going to look at the process again and get some feedback on the process. Because it needs to be tweaked like anything else, you know? It's, it's new, but I think overall, it was, it was, it was pretty good. But there's just some concerns that I have, and I know there's some concerns that other people have, so that we can get all, all the questions out. And I think we've made a few amendments that we caught, staff caught along the way, and that's just part of the process of, of amending it and getting it done. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lester. Oh, Deputy Mayor.
I just have a question for the committee. I just have a question for the committee for your August meeting. I'm curious as to, in some cases, would it make more sense to do a fee-for-service model for some agencies and the way they support people? Just a question to have you guys take a look at when you discuss it in August. Don't need an answer right now, but...
Noted.
I just wonder if it's some...
We can, but I'll tell you what, staff and I, legal and I, we sat down last year and spent hours looking at all different models. We called different cities. We looked at it. I mean, and this is the one that we finally came up with, so...
And that's good enough for me. I was just curious if that, if that...
And that's not to say we won't.
So...
I'm just saying, we, the, another committee has.
Okay.
But it's not to say this committee won't.
I thank you for your work. Excellent.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional comments, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move to item B in the action items. If the clerk would read.
B is denial of a tort claim submitted by attorney Vernon Jarboe on behalf of Chris Schultz and Schultz Development LLC for $116,000 for alleged damages related to water infiltration at 909 and 911 South Kansas Avenue.
We now, yes, we now will invite Mr. Schultz to speak to the body.
Thank you, governing body. I'm Chris Schultz of 909 and 911 South Kansas Avenue. I have a lot to say in a short period of time, so I've prepared a statement. I can't blame you for being tired of hearing about this issue all over the media. My family and I have certainly been tired of living with it. I've been a business owner in the affected building since 2002. We purchased the historic landmark in 2008. I moved my personal residence to the building in 2009. My family currently owns and operates Field of Greens and The Break Room. Our building was damaged by city hired contractors during the Kansas Avenue redevelopment project. The city of Topeka hired Sertus engineers to conduct the report of the work that needed to be done in order to repair the issues at the Tinkhamvee Building. The total of that bid came to $80,000. The city's staff told us that they weren't going to help us with any of the repair costs. The beautiful 1,500-square-foot apartment I personally lived in since 2009, which never had water issues until work on the Kansas Avenue project began, rented for $750 a month. At 48 months, this is where the balance of our inverse condemnation claim comes from, a claim total of $116,000. According to an estimate from Chavez Restoration, the amount of related ongoing cleanup work and remediation completed by my family is well in excess of $90,000 in value. We're not asking to be reimbursed for any of that at this time. The problem continues even as of last night's rain. If this kind of thing can happen to us, it can certainly happen to anyone in this room at any given time. There is more than enough proof in the city-ordered Terricon report to prove negligence on the Kansas Avenue project. In addition to physical damage done to our building, waterproofing was removed under the old sidewalks, and no waterproofing was replaced under the new sidewalks, causing widespread damage along the entire project area. A meeting of the downtown property owners was conducted by Downtown Topeka Incorporated to address the widespread damage. The property owners concluded that they wanted the city to move my issues to the top of the list, and we're all still waiting. This was not an innocent accident or an act of God. It's a blatant display of gross incompetence on an official city of Topeka-coordinated project. It was sloppy workmanship, and it was 100% preventable by your hired staff. Your team literally stood by and observed as my home and family-owned businesses were torn apart. The city has stretched out the clock as long as possible at every turn, and it's been held to deal with. I'm asking you all to please consider three good things that can come from your decision tonight. One, approve this claim to hold our city as accountable as you would hold any one of us who did damage to anyone else's property, as any of us would be held responsible for breaking city property. Two, I'm asking you to make a commitment to the economic strength of our community by providing, by proving that anyone who chooses to invest in Topeka, Topeka will show up to bat for those who choose to plan our team. Number three, every time you push the buttons at your chairs, please make the choices that show respect for our local heritage. We must always respect the landmarks created by Topeka's hard-working forefathers, like our historical building on the National Registry of Historic Places. We can't keep undervaluing projects and jumping in bed with the lowest bidders who take our money and run down the streets like a bull in a china shop. The old saying goes, "If you take shortcuts, you get cut short." There is more than enough evidence to conclude that shortcuts were absolutely taken by the city in this matter, turning my family and others into victims. As our council representatives responsible for oversight, I trust that you will vote with the integrity in your heart. Our future is in your hands, and the damages continue to rise with each passing day. I have pictures and copies of the supporting information available for you, which has been distributed, and all I'd like to say is, can we please just move forward and fix this? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Deputy Mayor.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz, why was this not put in your claim?
It was put in my claim because I didn't think that, first of all, we have an attorney that put our claim together for us.
Why didn't your attorney put this in the claim?
Well, because most of the information that's in that package is all city-done. The Sertus study is addressed to Mr. Peak. The, the Terricon report is a city study. It's just putting all these pieces together and making sure that you, as a voting body, have all the tools necessary to make the right choice.
And I understand that, but none of that was referenced in your claim either.
Well, I, I don't think that, you know, we need to go back and, and teach everybody about the things that we all know. We all know there was damage on Kansas Avenue, if any of us, any of you have read the Terricon report, and I, I hope that you all have.
My only point is, I, I don't know that that's how the process works. My understanding is what they take a look at is the information that's presented in the claim, and that's why I was, I was curious as to what, what they looked at when they looked at your specific claim. Because my understanding is if it's not referenced in there, it's not initially looked at, despite the fact that it's, you know, and I do agree with you, it's known, the information is known in the city. I'm just curious as to why it was done that way. Now, I'm not an expert, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know that that's exactly the way the process works. But in other cases, if we're trying to run a standard, fair process for all citizens, we look at the specific information in the claim and make a determination. And this information is not part of that claim.
Well, I'm here tonight with you, and I believe that's part of this claim.
Councilwoman Clear.
My pro, my issue is, I don't want to turn into us being, or me, I'll speak for myself. I don't want to turn into a judge. I don't want to sit here and listen to you, and then, I, I don't have a chance to have legal come up and tell their side. I just listen to you. Yeah, this sounds really great, but I haven't heard the other side. So I'm not a judge, and if you have a legal issue, I'm not a legal expert either. So I, I hear you, but that's their job. That's their job is to decide this.
And part of the reason that I came here tonight is because I didn't feel like they were doing an adequate job of making sure that you, as councilmembers, had the tools necessary to make the right decision tonight. Putting it on a consent agenda and shoveling it through is not the way to deal with this.
That's not what happened, and yes, they did.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hiller.
Based on the discussion amongst the council and from staff, as well as Mr. Schultz, it sounds like we had a very thin application. On the one hand, there was conversation that it was denied because there was nothing attached. Then we also had conversation that staff did go ahead and review what they had. I think that if, if the timeframe allows that referring this back to legal to make sure that what is requested and what is documented here was included in the information that they had, and ask them to either affirm or change their opinion, would, would be the best for all concerned. And so with that, if, if I can do that, just to refer this for a review.
We have a motion and we have a second, and this is to remand all of the information that Mr. Schultz has provided back to the attorneys, so that... that Mr. Schultz has provided back to the attorneys so that we can have them review the package. City Manager?
I think our city attorney has a comment here.
Just to reiterate, we, as Mr. Schultz has said, we have all of this information, regardless if he submitted it with the claim. We've had multiple executive sessions, not just last week, but on previous occasions, so I think everybody kind of knows what the underlying situation is with this matter, and we still would recommend denial. So that's staff's recommendation. That I can almost be 90% sure based on the fact that there's nothing new in this information that was presented this evening is not going to change. We're going to recommend denial of the claim.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. I would second that on the grounds, as Lisa, you did say you have not seen everything in here. So I would second that on the grounds that this is a very big issue, and so I would like to make sure that you review that before you say, you did say that. You said, "I'm sure it's probably what we reviewed," but you weren't positive.
I just looked through it.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ortiz.
But before you even looked through that, so just to be sure, I think what we need to do is just, you know, we have time that we could take another week to slow it down so that we could review this, and I would also like, is there a conversation down there that we would like to have on the microphone?
Councilwoman, we have 120 days to respond. Our time is up.
Okay.
On June 18th.
On what?
I think it's June 18th.
On June 18th, our time is up.
So we can't get this on next week?
The meeting is June 19th.
The meeting is June 19th, so therefore, we'd be past our 120-day requirement to respond.
You want this claim filed?
Yes.
Legal, Councilwoman Heller is interested in finding out when this was filed.
I don't know the exact date that it was filed, but I know that the 120 days are of June 18th.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Can we just take a timeout so she can find out when it was? This is kind of, she knows it's that, but she doesn't have the exact date, so we can be sure if, you know, there's a motion on the floor, can we just take a timeout, so a five-minute timeout, so we can figure out when the date is to be sure? And if we need to come back next Tuesday, then we'll have the opportunity to do that.
Let's have a five-minute recess to allow the staff to take some research time, and
we will reconvene at 7:17.